Sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, excuse me, at approximately seven oh three P M. At the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at sixty-five Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey, and a live stream can be viewed on YouTube at W W W dot YouTube dot com slash slash at Sparta T W P. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's begin with a salute to our flag.
I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rory, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
Bill Enright.
Here.
Justin Canelis.
Here.
Angela Cassie.
Here.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ernest Rixstad.
Here.
Peter Ski.
Here.
And Mike Sylvester.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So tonight's agenda is largely updates and discussion items. Some of our discussions are going to seem repetitive, but it's necessary to revisit certain topics as they relate to various sections. So we're going to begin with the town council update. Councilman Blumetti?
Yep, thank you, Chairwoman. My update for the last town council meeting, primarily the bulk of the meeting and the most material aspects of the meeting were the discussion of ordinance, proposed ordinance twenty-three fifteen, the P C E D zone amendments. There was a robust, lengthy discussion, including significant public comment. It was tabled for now for possible reconsideration by the Planning Board Subcommittee and Planning Board, and the owner representing three lots in that zone agreed to not submit nor allow any successors or purchasers to submit a land use application for sixty days while that possible reconsideration was happening. And that concludes my report.
So as Ms. Dunbar is not here, she did send me an email and ask me to update everyone regarding the environmental commission's meeting. First, she wanted to thank the members who were capable of being there with them, and a few items that she wanted to note, that the Land Conservancy of New Jersey can do an open space plan for Sparta for anywhere between thirteen to fifteen thousand. The Environmental Commission is in agreement that this is an urgent and timely need, which leads to inclusion in the master plan and updated zoning. Number two, the Environmental Commission would like to form an open space committee to help advise the Land Conservancy as to the current goals and objectives of Sparta and its residents. They're looking for representatives from the town council, planning board, Environmental Commission, recreation and senior committees, as well as citizens would be invited to participate from the onset so that a representative cross-section of ideas for land management are explored respectfully. The Environmental Commission also will be given sustainable Jersey credits, leading to the Silver Award for our town by following this process, leading to a new and updated open space plan. Number three, it was especially noted by members that if there is a current desire by Sparta to acquire specific parcels of land, such as those in P C D and surrounding areas, then the Land Conservancy can bridge this effort by contacting landowners and combined methods of funding from Green Acres, Highlands Council, A N J E C, Sussex County Open Space Fund, and state programs other than Green Acres, plus open space funding. They are also in the process of writing a resolution to protect Sparta from the impacts of invasive plants and promote native selection. They also reviewed P B A number seven oh seven, North Village at Sparta Building J. It's the last parcel in the North Village development, as was stated. It sits in between Starbucks and Chelsea Senior Living and up against the townhouses. This is an ecologically critical area and was, as was the entire North Village development. It's a critical area for wildlife and their corridors for migration, prime farmland, and gives us one hundred percent recharge for our drinking water, to better protect our natural resources upon which we all depend and at the same time serve senior needs, a little park convenient for seniors to use, as many need walkers and have memory challenges would be greatly helpful. She said that they are grateful for the town, for the town council, for approving the addition of two more seats to the Environmental Commission and permission for a student high school liaison. And that is the update from the Environmental Commission.
I can make a correction, just a clarification.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
On the last point with the Environmental Commission, so the council approved in concept adding two additional members to the Environmental Commission. That still needs to, the ordinance that established the Environmental Commission still needs to be updated, introduced, and the hearing has to be held.
Okay.
So that's, in concept, it was approved, we still need to go through the process of the ordinance change.
Gotcha.
And the addition, but the potential addition of a student liaison from one of the high schools as a non-voting member hasn't been discussed at the meeting, it's proposed, though.
Okay. And copies of the presentation that was provided by the Land Conservancy has been provided to each of the members of the board so that you can review it and have a better understanding. If you have an opportunity to take a look and have any questions, you can certainly forward them to me. That presentation was also posted online, if I'm correct, it was also posted online?
It was supposed to be, yes, I haven't checked, but yes.
And, okay. So now we're going to move into, there's nothing else related to environmental that I may have missed?
No.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to Subcommittee Updates, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Day?
Okay. Let me, first, I just want to talk about the town council meeting, I'll give you some of the thoughts that I had as being in attendance. First of all, I want to thank the members of the Subcommittee, left to right, Ernie Rixstad, Jeanette Burke, Bill Enright, Dave Simmons was there, Catherine Samad was there, so I appreciate their attendance in the meeting. Overall, I thought it was a really good meeting. The room was filled with members from the public, many of which expressed their views, so it was good to get the public thought on everything that we heard that night. If I step back and say, okay, what is it that I saw, what did I understand the concerns to be? I would say the biggest concern that I heard was traffic growth that would result from any development. Let me see, what else? The Wilson family, owners of the largest lot in the P C D attended, and they spoke about the history of volunteering to assist others in Sparta Township that dates back seventy-five years or more, was a pretty fascinating history to listen to, and I appreciated hearing it. I believe their attorney, Mr. McGovern, has filed a protest to stop action on passing the ordinance based on a couple of points. I believe that the town council attorney disagreed with that and felt that the town council was free to vote if they so chose. Given all that, all the discussion that happened, in the end, the town council voted to send the ordinance back to the Planning Board and to get together with the Wilson family and see if we could work out, find some common ground and work it out from there. So I think that's where we are tonight, and if any of the members of the Subcommittee or anybody has any different thoughts or needs to add anything, you know, please feel free. Okay. So in terms of the, in terms of the site plan, the minor site plan waiver Subcommittee, we're all caught up on everything. I think we've got about, I don't have the exact number, I think it's about thirty-six applications to date. We only have two, actually, we received some today. We have only two outstanding, both of which we're waiting on feedback from the applicants before we can proceed with the hearing. So, you know, good job, my thanks again to everybody involved there, you know, Dean, Angela, and Christine as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, also, just to expand on what was going on with the Subcommittee, an invitation was sent to the Wilson family and representatives of the Wilson family to be in attendance with us, and also invited them to schedule a concept plan review meeting with the full board at the discretion, we're hoping for either September sixth or September twentieth, or date to be determined if neither of those dates are amenable to the family or representatives. I believe Mr. McGovern and Mr. Wilson is here this evening. Hopefully, we'll hear from you during the portion of the open section. On other board business, we were provided with the N J D E P legal notification for the freshwater wetlands general permit twelve application, Route fifteen corridor, rockfall mitigation. Mr. Collins, I believe this is only an informational notification?
My understanding as well.
Okay.
You don't take any action, but you might want to review it and be aware of it.
Okay. So, yes, it's my understanding that we don't need to take any action, but basically what it is telling us is that they're doing rockfall mitigation and subsurface oil exploration in Jefferson, Rockaway, Lafayette, and Sparta along the Route fifteen corridor. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the documentation that was provided?
So, it's subsurface soil exploration, right?
Yes.
Okay. I thought for a second you said oil, by mistake.
No, no, oil.
Source of revenue.
I have a question, and maybe, Tom, you can answer. So are they doing that investigation to kind of map the bedrock and the soil quality, or are they chasing some type of environmental impairment, or both?
I really don't know, you'd have to ask them or Dave, maybe Dave has some idea what the project is.
Other than the exploration, I'm not aware of anything else yet.
Gentlemen, can you move the microphone a little bit closer to you, please? Thank you.
Other than the exploration and the general permit for that work, that's all I'm aware of right now.
Water? I'm sorry?
Other than, no, the general exploration, as you said, for the bedrock and the soil.
Okay, thank you.
It's concerning rockfall mitigation, right?
Right, yeah, it's about the...
They started this about five years ago, so.
Different areas?
Yeah, I mean, planning out where they were going to start and where they were going to go, so it's a slow process.
What I'm thinking is perhaps the Planning Board can send an inquiry to N J D E P, just asking for more information around, not only the duration, I'm not sure that was in there, how long it'll be in place, but more importantly, what's the expected impact, you know, short term and long term, to that wetlands transition area? I think that's the crux of this, right, it's in a wetlands transition area?
Right.
So perhaps we can send an inquiry back to them, asking for more information about that.
Okay, any other questions or commentary regarding this documentation? All right, we're moving forward to the discussion regarding ordinance Subcommittee budget. I just received today a copy of emergency resolution N J S forty A four dash forty-eight that stipulates that, excuse me, a sum of seventy-five thousand dollars has been reclassified for the ordinance Subcommittee's purposes, given that we now need to revisit the P C D zone and move forward with the other areas at that point. We also need to have some discussion regarding the next steps for the Subcommittee, but right now, it's good to know that we have the funds in place to be capable of doing that. Any residual funds that are based in the confines of this reclassification are going to be used for the Master Plan Subcommittee, which is intended to be formed hopefully by the end of September. We'll have more information at our September sixth meeting regarding how and when to apply for that Subcommittee.
Is that seventy-five thousand all-inclusive, or new funds in addition to what was already allotted?
This is in addition to what was already allotted.
So the funds that were allocated, did that reach back to January one and include some of the things that we were operating while?
Yes.
The expenses that?
Yes, the original budget of forty-five thousand included everything that was there. So this reclassification of seventy-five thousand is to help us go back and revisit the initial process, move forward with the other zones, and what, like I said, because it may also take some time for us to get certain bonding in place, certain grants put together for the master plan, and we're hoping to push that forward sooner rather than later. So any overage from those funds can be used to start that process as well. Okay. I know it was supposed to be just about surrounding the budget, but we probably should discuss the next steps of the Subcommittee as they pertain to not just P C D, but we do have three other zones that need to be evaluated, so we really should make a decision on, or have some discussion surrounding how we all feel, what our opinions are on how to handle this moving forward. So I'll open it up to the Subcommittee first, if they have any thoughts on what they think should be the next steps.
So I'll give you my thoughts, and I may have mentioned this in the past meetings, but, so we've got three other zones that we need to look at, economic development, P D R M one, and P D R M two. P D R M one and economic development district, we took a look at last year, or the Planning Board at that time took a look at that last year, and ordinance twenty-three fifteen came out of that. I think there was still some concerns that the public had with twenty, I'm sorry, not twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one came out of that. There's still some areas that we were going to look at, we weren't going to do a bottoms-up like we did here, because a lot of that's been done already. There are some areas I think we want to look at, and we've actually gotten together and kicked them around just with the Planning Board members of the Subcommittee. So I think we're about ready to get together, bring some of these thoughts forward with the professionals, get their thoughts, and then bring that forward as a resolution. P D R M two has not been looked at, so I think that needs a, needs a deep dive, but again, I want to get the thoughts of all the other Subcommittee members, come up with agreement, and before we do anything, we'll bring it back here and provide a briefing similar to what we did with the P C E D. So keep, you know, we'll bring everybody along, each step of the process.
Any other member of the Subcommittee?
Is that going to be handled by our planner, or are we out for R F P for a planner?
Bless you.
There is an R F P out there. The professional updates, actually, we were going to get into after we finish this process, but the R F P closing date...
Last Friday in August?
Is the last Friday in August, okay, that's what I thought. We don't know yet whether or not there have been, or how many applications have been received, or, you know, what the, where we stand at this point. Anything that's being received should be received by the Town Manager's Office at this point in time. Once those are all received, then they will all be opened, they'll all be reviewed by the Town Manager's Office, and then that information will get forwarded to us. One of the reasons why I was going to go into this after this was because I wanted to, since we're going to lob that ball out there. Dean and I, right now, are the only two who were a part of the review Subcommittee, and we were going to throw it out to other members, hoping to find two more to help us review that data once it's received.
Yeah, I was asking, just from a process and timing standpoint, getting that selection completed, and then the recommendations from the Subcommittees to the plan, to the selected planner, to give their opinion or...
Right now, things are exactly as they have been from the beginning. Right now, we're working, I believe Catherine is going to take the place of Mike?
That's what it looks like, I believe so.
So, yeah, we'll be working with Catherine from Harbor until such time as decisions are made through that process.
My sense is that this other Subcommittee work will be well underway before we have a final, through the process.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions relative to Subcommittee progress or next steps?
Are we going to start with Catherine as the Subcommittee, and then if something's changed, switch it midway through, or?
That would be the idea. I mean, because if we, if we as a board change our planner, then that's the way that works.
I guess, I guess what's the, we should probably figure out what's the timeframe for getting these other zones started, at least the next one?
Right, that's basically what I was trying to, you know, like streamline us back into, you know, what we feel we should do in terms of moving forward with these other zones, because these other zones are vulnerable and really need attention. I mean, I understand P C D has a lot of visibility, but these other zones are larger scale and can do far more damage in the long run if they're not reviewed, yeah.
Yeah. So one question I have along those lines, so, you know, my understanding is, from a P C E D perspective, the Subcommittee's done, we made the recommendation, now we're handling it as a Planning Board.
Right.
So we're going to move forward with the economic development zone and the P D R M one, which I think is a good thing, especially with Catherine, because she was involved in the other zone, so she has that knowledge already. So hopefully, you know, that's going to be, it shouldn't take nearly not as long as what P C did, P C E D did.
Okay, when is your next scheduled meeting?
So I don't have one right now, I wanted to see how things went tonight. You know, we've had, I guess, two or three already on the E D D and the P D R M one, and so now that we know we've got the additional money, we're good to go. We'll get something set up, you know, get some on the schedule within the next week or two.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments relative to the Subcommittee? Okay, well, seeing as though I already went through what I was going to go through for the professional search update, does anybody have any additional questions or comments relative to that? No? Okay, so we are going to move forward with the master plan reexamination. Each member of the board is in receipt of a description and high-level outline of the process for the master plan. We want to say that this outline, actually, this outline was penned by Catherine Samad and takes approximately between twelve and eighteen months, depending. I want to say it's probably going to be squarely in between that, because some of these items we've already taken care of, some of them we're in the process of, and some of them may not, may not have to extend to the full, certain areas, it's one to three months, it may not extend to a full three months, it may only be one month, and some of these items may also be overlapping. Given that, so we start with the early preparation stages, which is a one-to-three-month timeframe where a master plan Subcommittee is established, we identify the scope of the plan update and major issues to be addressed, a lot of that we're doing right now with the Subcommittee having done its work, or continuing to do its work, with us having had the Highlands Council presentation, with us having had the Land Conservancy presentation, with us going forward and having our kickoff meeting for plan endorsement that's scheduled for September eleventh, that's going to give us the rest of what we need in terms of pulling that together, which is why on September sixth, I think we'll be confident in terms of being capable of moving forward with pulling together the Subcommittee. And looking at our land use elements, seeing what's currently in the plan, which is part of the existing conditions analysis, so that's one to three months, but that's an overlap with everything that I've just said. Then there's a public outreach stage, which is one to six months, which is, once everything has been outlined and where we think things should go, we'll bring those ideas to the public, and we'll get public input. That will likely, in my opinion, take several meetings, I want to say at least two, possibly three, depending upon what the feedback is for each. Then we move into the distilling of data and inputting that into a draft master plan, which, according to this timeline, can take six to twelve months. If we do it right, it should really only take six, because the draft should be ongoing as we're moving through the process. And as we're looking at each of these zones, that should give us a really good idea, so it would just be a matter of putting that language in a document. So I think this really gives us a really good, high-level look at what we need to do and the direction we need to take. You know, with the board having kind of given this a first glance, any quick questions or notes?
No, just that regarding public involvement and public input, I mean, that's critical, and...
Yes, absolutely.
We'll obviously be doing that along the way.
That's why that takes a six, that's why that lead time is a six-month process.
It'll be iterative process, too.
I believe, and once I read this, I honestly, when I said twelve to eighteen months, in my personal opinion, this is going to be the longest stretch of what we need to do, because it's going to have to be during the course of hearings, we only meet twice a month, you know, so if that's, if the feedback isn't what we need it to be, we have to wait another, you know, two to three weeks before we can address it again, so.
In the final stage, they said, you know, you're going to have stakeholder groups. Is the public, does the public have a stakeholder group represented as part of that?
They will be part of this, there will be public, members of the public as part of the Subcommittee.
Okay, great.
Right, that's, so now, one of the things we can talk about right now relative to the Subcommittee is, I mean, are there any thoughts in terms of size, you know, like you mentioned, I mean, we have decided that, you know, obviously, there needs to be members of the public that are part, but do we have any thoughts on liaison members, do we have any thoughts on, you know, overall group size, how to handle those meetings, if we do determine that it's a more sizable group, then can sit in a conference room comfortably?
Or a G.
Oh, yeah, or an auditorium.
I think we'll have to add up the total, because I think we'll probably have someone from the zoning board, somewhere from the Environmental Commission, perhaps other Committees, there's a lot listed here, too, like Historical Society...
Right, right.
Police, someone, either Town Manager, possibly their representative, I'm sure there's others that, you know, I'm not even thinking of, and then...
Right, and then the public, so, I mean, when I think about it, I'm off the cuff twelve, that's, you know, and I think that that's a solid base, but that may be a minimum amount.
Total, total.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to know, again, they've done this in the past, how big were those groups, and kind of, doesn't mean that's the right answer for us, but it gives us a good benchmark to say, you know, how did it work in the past?
Well, the unfortunate circumstances, this hasn't been done on a large scale since eighty-four.
I agree.
So we may have to go to other municipalities to see how that's been handled.
I still think that's a good data point for us to have, if we can get it.
Okay.
But perhaps Harbor has insight on that, too, from other clients?
Right.
Well, the good news is the public's been involved in a lot of upfront Subcommittee activity as well, so we've been doing a good job of embracing that in our discussions.
I agree.
Yeah.
I would agree.
I don't know what the minimum or maximum size of these things could be.
Right, I mean, when we think about, you know, just as Dean mentioned, so, I mean, you've got Planning Board members, then you've got a liaison from the zoning board, a liaison from environmental, you know, the Town Manager or their representative, that's another three individuals off the top, so if you're going to bring in somebody from historic, somebody, you know, so you've got a lot of group representations, and then you're looking for a solid base from the public, so that, you know, that gets sizable quickly.
Another way to look at it, too, is we could have a Subcommittee of regular, ongoing representation of members, which is smaller, and then we can have one-off or two-off meetings with some of the stakeholder groups. So if we want to meet with... So, if we want to meet with the police or the
Right.
Board of, Board of Ed representatives or Recreation Department, or
And just invite them, right, invite them to stakeholder meetings sessions.
Yeah, and not, not part of the subcommittee,
Of court group.
Which would have people from the public as well. Yeah, that's one way to do it.
That's the feedback I was looking for. Okay. Any other questions related to that? Or to master plan moving forward at all? Nope? Okay. There had been some discussion in, in previous meetings and some mention, you know, by, by the public regarding minutes. We know that we're, we're behind, and I know I haven't updated anyone in, in a while, but now that we have Dory in, and she's been here and, and has assessed the situation and, and redistributed the workload, she's been given permission to bring in some temporary help to catch us up. So, hopefully, once that's put into place, we can get those minutes put out there. But of course, in the interim, anybody who's interested in our meeting since May, they can be, they can be viewed via live stream on our YouTube channel. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the dais before we open it to the floor? No? Okay. So, now we're going to open it to the public for matters not on the agenda or matters not related to a hearing or open application.
Very briefly, Frank McGovern, and I'm the attorney for the owner of the property that's in the P C E D zone. Mr. Wilson is here with me, and I thank you very much for inviting, so this, thank you very much for inviting us to come to this meeting. Just right now, I've got nothing really to say in terms of input, other than that I will be contacting Ms. Fox about scheduling and so forth. I know one or two of those dates that were suggested, unfortunately, there's vacations in September coming up, so that's going to be problematic, but we'll figure that out. But thank you again.
Okay. And thank you for coming. We, we appreciate your attendance and, and we'll, we'll, we look forward to having an open conversation.
Thanks.
I have one question on that. Should we be contacting the other landowners in that area to join that meeting as well?
They're the only undeveloped area in that section, and we haven't been advised to contact anyone else. This, this, we've contacted them because it was decreed by the town council that we do so.
Tom, is there any?
There's no obligation to contact them. If you would like to, you certainly may, and these are public meetings, so they're known.
Right. We're not asking them to come to anything other than a public meeting.
They will be on the agenda, the zone will be on the agenda, the concept plan of the Wilson family will be on the agenda, and if anybody else wants to come, they're welcome. If you would, if the board would like to make some motion to send the agenda to the other property owners, you could do that, but there's no obligation to do that.
I have a question. When we notify landowners, not, not specifically this, but any, any landowner that is somehow involved in any building or whatever, how do we notify them?
Actually, when it's a site plan application, we don't notify, the applicant is required to give notice within 200 feet of a list within 200 feet
Okay.
From the tax assessor in accordance with the municipal land use law. Although Mr. McGovern argues that the township had to notify his client of the proposed P C E D zone, that Mr. Ryan and I don't agree with him about that, because we're not in the P C E deal, zone changing the classification of the zone. If you do change the classification of a zone, if the council does that in an ordinance, then they give notice to the people in the zone or within 200 feet of the zone of the proposed second reading of the ordinance.
Right, so that doesn't come from us, that comes from
No, I get that, but
By mailing, that's by mailing.
Mail, not certified mail.
But, but all ordinances get a notice in the newspaper of at least the, this is an unusual term, if it's more, longer than eight octavo pages, it gets summarized. If it's more than eight, less than eight octavo pages, it gets published in the newspaper. And frankly, the legislature of New Jersey doesn't give any notice of any legislation. So, that's, legislation is quite different than a site plan application.
Thank you.
I, I think we should invite the other landowners, whether it's developed or not, it still is affecting the property that they own, and whether or not we're obligated to do it, I think it would, in an effort of transparency, be the right thing for us to do.
Absolutely, make a motion.
I'd make a motion to
Yeah.
Notify the other landowners in the P C E D, P C E D zone, whether it's September 6th or a date to be determined later.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'd like to say, should we do, I think a roll call?
Discussion first.
Oh, discussion, sure.
Yeah. I mean, I would just say that we're very careful, and I'm sure we can get better advice at how we word that, that we're not implying that we're going to be acting on any input and anything, that it's just for a public meeting, just a notice, not that we're looking to incorporate any feedback, because that's not necessarily true.
That's fine, but if we did it in the first place, we wouldn't be in the position that we are in the Wilson family, where we already finished the work from the subcommittee, and now we're having to readdress it and bring it back to the planning, bring it back to the town council a second time.
Yeah. I mean, my understanding is this is a special circumstance, that normally we don't, it's not customary to reach out if it's not a ma, a major change like a reclassification, if it's not that, that it's not common to reach out to every landowner, because it could, zones get very large. That's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct. But Bill's statement would make sense. It was a motion to notify them, and as I said before, just send them a copy of the, of the agenda. The agenda says what it says, and it will say, "Discussion of P C E D zone and the Wilson family farm or family property concept plan." They have the right to discuss a concept plan under the municipal land use law. Concept plans are an interesting nuance in the municipal land use law. Basically, anyone can make a, a concept plan to the board. The board is, is authorized to review concept plans. Concept plans under the municipal land use law are conceptual plans. The statements made by the board and the statements made by the applicant and by the public are not binding upon anyone going forward. They, they are not, they are not an application for development, they are not an approval, they cannot result in an approval, even if someone says it's a good plan, that doesn't mean it's approved. It's totally advisory, totally conceptual, and is a way to have a forum to, under the municipal land use law, to have a public meeting of the planning board to talk about things like this. And it's quite straightforward, and the agenda will be clear, so it will not
Right, I think
It will not be, it will, in Dean's reference, it doesn't become a binding application for development.
Correct. They were invited to a concept plan review, so it's, it's not, it's something specific to them, if, if they were intending to bring an application, or they, anybody can come in for a concept plan review to, to an open meeting. And that's why the invitation was, was directed specifically to them, because A, the town council requested it, and B, their zone is undeveloped. So, we can, we can invite, we can notify the entire area that, that we're having a meeting discussing the P C E D, but they're also notified by the, by the newspaper, the agenda's posted. It's, it's not that that information isn't out there. But yes, I mean, we can 100%, you know, given these circumstances, send specific documentation to the other landowners of the area, to let them know that we're continuing to discuss the P C E D zone, but in specific to the invitation to, to the Wilson family, this is for the development of their property and their concept review and what they intend to do with their property moving forward.
It's not necessarily just the development of their property, anyone that owns a property
No, no, I, I understand, I understand where we're coming from in terms of the entire zone. What I'm saying is, they were invited to a concept plan review meeting that's specific to them, not the entire zone. So, when we have a conversation with them pertinent to their property, that's what it's going to be pertinent to, even though it's relative, because they own a large portion of that zone, the conversation with them is going to be specific to their property. But to your point, we can, and, you know, if, if the motion passes, will notify everyone in the area.
And it'll be sent out regular mail?
Yes.
Then are we going to do it for the rest of the zones as well?
That's right, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a question. Exactly. Are we setting a precedent right now that that's what we're going to do?
Subcommittee meeting for the
There's no duty to give a notice of subcommittee meetings. Period. Subcommittees are a, not a public body under the municipal land use law or under the Open Public Meetings Act. So, the answer to that question is, I wouldn't advise it, I don't think it has any duty to, and quite frankly, there was no duty to, in the case of the P C E D zone, regardless of what Mr. McGovern argues.
So, the ordinance that were, is being, I'm sorry, the resolution's being proposed right now, is it strictly related to P C E D? And we can revisit this down the road when we get to the other zones, like, you know, Economic Development District is probably, I don't know, 80, 90, or 100 different parcels as opposed to, this one makes sense if we're going to have discussion, one, with one lot, and I, I agree with you, that we should probably invite the others, but I'm, I'm not sure I want to use that as a precedence for everything going forward, but for P C E D, I, that makes sense to me.
I think we already are establishing a precedence by agreeing to have the meeting in the first place. I think the precedence has already been set by, directed by the town council.
Right, but concept, concept plan review is, is there and, and available to anybody who's intending to develop their property. That's, that's their right. Any developer who's going to, to develop a property, any landowner who wants to do anything with their property, can come in front of the full board with concept plan review. That, that's, in, in other municipalities, they utilize technical review meetings, which are smaller bodies, where, where developers and landowners can speak to professionals and, and certain members of the board to, to discuss potentials for development, but we are choosing to do this in the open with an entire board, so that, that everyone, all the stakeholders can be involved. That is separate from P C E D zone discussion. I, I think we need to make a very distinct clarification here. Concept plan review and P C E D zone ordinance, two separate conversations, two separate items. Just because right now there's an overlap doesn't obligate us to do anything in, in other arenas. Now, we can set a precedent, saying that, sure, we're going to notify other stakeholders in, in other zones, but concept plan review is not the same conversation as what's going on with the ordinance in and of itself.
So, in the correspondence going out to the other property owners, maybe we could just clarify that.
As I said before, the, the agenda will state that you're going to be talking about P C E D zone and the concept plan of the Wilsons. That's all.
That's it.
And that's it.
Right.
And I, I realize that you're thinking you want to keep everything in some uniform way, but just because you do this in the P C E D zone does not mean you have to do it in any other zone. There's no precedent. This, this is not, this is not a, even in a site plan application, there's no precedent, but basically, this is a decision you're making. And by the way, the council can't direct you to do this, they ask you to do this.
Correct.
You are doing it, but it's your decision whether to do it. So, you're not bound by this, so.
So, is there still a motion on the table to send notification correspondence of a potential conversation regarding the P C E D zone and the concept plan review for the Wilson family at the point that they, that we agree on a date? Is that, is that the motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the motion just to mail them the minutes?
The agenda.
Yeah.
Agenda.
Right. So, the mailing of an agenda.
Mailing of the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I second that.
Okay. So, we'll do a roll call?
Councilman Dean Blumery?
No.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day?
Yes.
Bill Enright?
Yes.
Justin Canales?
Yes.
Angela Cassi?
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano?
Abstain.
Ernest Rogstad?
No.
Peter Ski?
Yes.
Mike Sylvester?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no, one abstain.
Motion passes. I invite anyone else from the public to discuss any other items?
Jenny Derrick's tapped into Sparta. You answered most of my questions, so thank you for that. I'm going to return to some of my usual questions. When can we expect an update on the maps on the site, on the website? I understand Dory is working and got a lot of work ahead of her, but also our ordinances are not up to date on the website, so that's something that also needs attention. You did mention that you don't know where we are in the search process, so we'll leave that. The site, the concept site plan, I'm sorry, the concept plan review meeting, you're saying that you're requesting that, or has?
We've invited the Wilson family based on, on the, so based on what happened at the town council meeting, we sent out an invitation to the family and their representatives and invited them to attend the concept plan review. We, we suggested two dates, September 6th and September 20th. If, if the family or their representatives can't be there for either of those dates, a new date will be determined and, and noticed accordingly.
Right, I understand all that. My question goes to the concept plan part of that discussion. Is there a concept, is there a plan to be discussed, or are we just
No, the
Hardly talking about
Concept plan review, that type of meeting is for, to allow the landowners to come in and discuss with us their, their intention for the property, or any other information that they'd like to convey to us, that we can take into consideration when, when we revisit the zone.
Thank you. And then one last repeating, repeating question, the litigation filed by objective attorneys regarding the diamond chip application, are we, has the planning board requested any settlement? Is there any discussion of a settlement?
I have no information on that. I have gotten nothing regarding a settlement.
As we explained it before, Jen, settlements, there has been some discussion with people, but there is no, not a full settlement, and there was, seemed to be no effort or willingness of either Mr. Dash or Mr. Simon, or merely Mr. Simon or Diamond Chip to settle. So, but that's always possible for the, particularly them, to reach some settlement that we would, the board would have to hear about.
Right.
But I have not, we have not heard about any actual settlement, and so
Understanding the settlement.
Another question you had that no one answered, but I think you might know the answer to this, that the council retained a planning firm to have a G I S map updated for the zone map. You'd have to ask the, probably the manager, what the status of the G I S map of the zone map status is. I believe it was Jay Caldwell Associates and Dave Manhart who were retained to do that for the G I S map.
Thank you.
But that does, that's not the ordinance, that is an ordinance map. The code of the township is a combination of both the code online by the online company and the ordinances adopted since. And my understanding on those is that the council governing body or the clerk tries to update and bring the adopted ordinances into the code online through the code company, software company, on an annual basis.
Annual, okay.
But I, that's what my understanding is. I don't get involved in that, but you could talk to the clerk about what's the latest of the status of the code online. But just because something is not on the code online does not mean it's not an adopted ordinance.
Well, I understand that, it's just a matter of trying to keep track of where we are, and also minus an updated map. The map that's, that's listed right now is dated 2014. We've had significant changes since then.
I, I
Thank you.
I'm not disagreeing with you. But, but also, Jen, on that, when ordinances were adopted and changed sections of the map, those ordinances replace that section of the zone map. So, the zone map is technically not a living document, it does have to be updated online, but the ordinances amending the zone map are ordinances, and even though the map itself may not have been excised and replaced, if it was amended, those amendments become that part of the zone map, even though, even though they're only
I've even gone into the zoning department to get a copy, just relying on what is supposed to be. I've even gone into the zoning department to get a copy, just relying on what is posted on the website, and they don't have one either.
Understood, and that's why I think you know that the township council authorized this consultant to update that map.
Anyone else?
I have a question about something that was
Can you please state your name and your address?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Sam Rafailov, Five Chapel Hill Court. You mentioned that earlier in your introduction, there may be some funds available for potentially allocating them for the purchase of the parcels from the environmental and Highlands, I think, or a few other bodies. Would you elaborate on that a little more, please?
That was part of the presentation from the Land Conservancy that was done for the Environmental Commission. I don't know if Councilman Blumetti, you wanna expand on that a little bit more, you might have a better handle on it than I do, since I'm not part of the E C.
Sure, yeah. The presenter from the Land Conservancy of New Jersey, similar to the Highlands Council speaker last month for the, there was a joint session, they, they both alluded to and, and mentioned sources of grants or funding that could be pursued to purchase or partially purchase land, either in combination with a township or with, you know, on its own or through a foundation. So there's different mechanisms to possibly purchase land. So, but it wasn't specifying whether it would be publicly owned land, like a township buying it, or other entities, but there are grants and other, for instance, Green Acres has funding available. Highlands Council has some typically, I think right now, we heard last month that they don't have any existing right now, but they should be replenished down the road. So there's different sources of funding that can be applied for to offset or purchase land for different reasons.
So I attended the, the last council meeting, and it was the first township meeting I've ever attended, and it was very educational, I was quite ignorant before, so I didn't even understand that it was possible to, for the township to just purchase the land that was being discussed in the new ordinance 2013, because that would be a much more fair way to approach things, rather than voting on a, on someone's, on a zoning or planning ordinance and then disqualifying the private owner of the land from any financial gain. So I don't, I don't know if this is the right form for it, but would this money be potentially able to be used for the purchase of, by the township of that land from the Wilson family, for example? This way, they are fairly compensated and the citizens of Sparta are also, get their wishes of not having further development and also increasing traffic in that area.
I could probably try to address part of that, so these are probably more questions for the council. And by the way, any, any discussions, any serious discussions or negotiations or anything around potential ideas of purchasing land by the township, always happen in executive session for the council, that's offline, and with the attorney and the township manager. In terms of your question, there is no funding right now. I think the funding you may be alluding to was mentioning we have additional $75,000 to do the work of reviewing and updating different zones to make them more in line with today's current conditions, that, that, those
Not the $75,000, no, no. Was that the only monies that was being presented?
Yes.
From the Green Acres and
No, 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 okay, that
Pursued yet, those were just ideas that are out there.
Those are two separate, right.
Potentials is what I'm trying to understand. There's potential areas of funding that we can potentially apply for and tap into and use that towards the wishes of the public, is that, am I understanding it correctly?
Generically, it's correct, yeah. Not implying that that's a consideration, it never has even been discussed, but
All right, and
And regardless, that wouldn't be a, a consideration of the planning board, that would be something that would be done on town council level.
Okay, and, uh, is that something, you know, the general public has a chance to either vote on or have an input on? You know, is that some, I, I, I'm not familiar with these processes, it's very complex.
Definitely not a vote. Yeah, that, that wouldn't be, unless it was a referendum, like a, down the road, a huge thing on the ballot, but typically not a vote. The public input would come through, like you're doing tonight, and through council meetings, input that way. You know, I would go out on a limb and say perhaps during the master plan process, which is gonna be starting up sometime soon and, and going on for a while, some of that public input and visioning perhaps could lead to the intent to do that, but not specific properties. But I think the, the way that the public's, can voice, the public can voice their suggestions or support now would be through public comment.
Okay, thank you.
But to add to that question, and just for my clarification, the open space funds that are available, if it's privately owned, it has to be a public-private partnership to then have the town support the open space purchase or transfer? Or can open space do a deal with a private owner outside of municipal oversight or involvement?
Can you clarify, Mike, what you mean by open space? Do you mean using our open space funds?
If someone has a 100-acre farm privately owned and they wanna deed, deed or take advantage or get, sell it to open space and utilize the open space funds to get fairly compensated and secure it that way, does that have to come through the town, Tom, or is that, can they do that directly? It's a little different than farm preservation, because farm preservation is doing one-on-one deals with
Direct.
Private owners.
Yeah, yeah.
So just clarifying.
There are many, there are many ways, first of all, the planning board has nothing to do with the acquisition of plant, land, period. So we're kinda wasting the planning board's time to even talk about the planning board. There is a linkage with the open space master plan amendment, but that is not about, that is not truly acquisition of real property, that's about identifying properties that might be appropriate for future acquisition, guess by whom? The township council. There are organizations that acquire property for open space purposes and restrictions that have nothing to do with the government. Some of those include the Trust for Public Lands of Nature Conservancy, Land Conservancy, various entities that have a track record of knowing what properties they would like to buy in order to get deed restrictions that preserve them forever. Sometimes they partner with government, sometimes they do not. Sometimes they do an acquisition and then they, because they have the freedom to acquire with easier techniques and different types of sources of funds, they sometimes then, after they put deed restrictions in the deeds, sell those properties to local county and state governments, subject to the deed restrictions. None of this has anything to do with zoning. No, must, you must wear separate hats when it comes to zoning versus acquisition of property and discussions, they don't mix, they would, they should not be mixed at all. That's my advice to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the floor? Any other questions or comments from the dais?
None here.
Okay, well, given that, seeing as though we are not going into executive session, I, I will accept a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.